Push through whatever you're going through. And um, you will see that you don't need drugs or alcohol to make you happy in life. Thank you.
Thank you Jubilee. So I know there's a few other people that we haven't really heard from, but I think to honor some time, I would like to go ahead and introduce Risha. She said she's the coordinator for the Drug Free Communities Grant. And then I want her to go ahead and introduce Bill. And we're going to move through the agenda now. So go ahead and take it away, Risha.
Okay, so I can't talked about our organization already, but we mostly work with intervention and prevention side of drug abuse and alcohol use among youth. We also work with adults, but today we are focusing on youth. Our town hall is alcohol prevention among youth. And we are, we work with community members. We work with 12 sectors of our community. And some of our partners are here today as well. Thank you all for coming. It's really helpful to get your opinions on things that are important to prevent these drug abuse and alcohol use. So today, we just have youth speakers and an expert who talk about their experience and their knowledge. And Doc will, Doc, who's the Executive Director of CCI, he'll go on and introduce. Go on, Doc.
Thank you, Risha. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thumbs up. Thank you all for coming. It's just really exciting to see folks here. And we're really interested in your ideas, as Risha said, about how to prevent and reduce underage drinking. As mentioned, I'm the Director of the Community Counseling Institute. So we have a drug-free grant as well as a grant to prevent underage drinking called the Stop Act Grant. With that said, I'd like to move on to our agenda because I know some of you may have questions or comments. And you can jump in after the panel and we'll entertain whatever questions or comments that you have. We're looking for people to really participate as much as you feel comfortable in participating. Because the only way things will improve with our community, with our families, with our youth is through our own actions. We have to kind of be the change that we're looking for. So with that said, we have a panel that includes Daylin from Wilson High School. And she's on board here, I see. And then we have Jubilee, who is at Chief South High School. And then we have Dwight Randolph, who is our Stop Act Coordinator. And each person will have somewhere around seven minutes or so, I believe, to share some of their thoughts about underage drinking and how to prevent it. So without further ado, I'll introduce Daylin Jones to say some things about this particular topic.
Hello, my name is Daylin Jones. I am a freshman at Wilson High School. And I'm about to tell you guys why I don't use or abuse alcohol. My mom had a friend who abused alcohol. His alcohol addiction started when he was in the military. When, when he got out a few years later, his wife filed a divorce and he lost his kids. And that's because of his addiction. After he lost his kids, he went into a deep depression. He then got a girlfriend who was an opioid user. And that's how they connected. He drank and she took pain pills. So with them together, that didn't make his addiction any better. After that relationship was done, he stopped drinking as much. And then that's when he met my mother. She went to his house one night to have a drink, not knowing he wasn't alcoholic. After they drank, he was acting belligerent. And my mom then left his house and called him the next day. During that phone call was when he told my mom the whole story about how his alcohol abuse started. My mom then felt bad and let him stay with us so he could be on the right track. So he moved in to my house and I originally didn't know why he moved in with us. But he seemed cool. He seemed like there was no problem with him. But I seem to notice that late at night, he would go into my back bathroom all the time. And I saw alcohol one time when I went in there. I asked my mother about it and she later told me why he was here. And later telling me that he was here because she's trying to keep him on the right track so he doesn't drink. But then she found out he was still drinking like behind her back. So that's when she was like, you can't, like she didn't, she wanted me to be around it. So that's when she kicked him out of some sort. He still somewhat lived with us. He would just have to be in his car all the time. She didn't want him near me. But he didn't like that. So he started drinking more and acting even more belligerent and it got bad. That's when the disturbance happened. He would, he'd drink three to five liters of hard liquor a day. He cussed all of us out. I can't count the amount of times he cussed and flipped me off personally. And with all this happening, I was just confused. Because I was so young. I was just like, I didn't understand why was I in the middle of this? Why am I in this situation? But thinking about it now, I'm somewhat glad I got to see that. Because I learned a lot from it. And with his presence and disturbance, we've called the cops many times. My other family members have been called over. The neighbors called the cops. It was a lot. It went from him waking up and getting ready for his job every morning to him being in his car all the time, not being able to walk, not being able to talk or eat because he's so drunk. It went from him getting divorced to him losing his kids, to him losing his 17-year job at Boeing, to him not being able to keep a stable job, to him not being able to contact my mom anymore because she blocked him on everything. And it happened so fast. Seeing how alcohol can affect a person, I saw how alcohol can affect a person. And I don't, I don't want that to be me. When I, as a youth, I also see how easy it is to get a hold of alcohol and even marijuana. I've had a very close friend who was like a brother, but he took the wrong route and was drinking and smoking in the seventh grade. He tried convincing me multiple times to do it, but I told him that's not me and I don't want to do that. And with him trying to convince me to do it, I noticed that's not a real friend. So I kept my distance from him. I no longer speak to him no more. I personally, I personally don't see any reason to drink or smoke, especially at the age I'm at right now. In conclusion, this is why I don't use or abuse alcohol. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daylin. That was an excellent summary of some really powerful experiences that you've had. So we certainly appreciate your sharing with us. We'll go on to hear from Jubilee at this point. And Jubilee will talk about this topic as well. And I see that she is, oh, there she is. Got it. Okay, Jubilee, you're on.
Hi. So as I was saying earlier, I first started drinking when I was a junior in high school, which was last year in the summertime, right before I hit junior year. My brother, mostly because my brother had just gotten out of jail. And you know, he wasn't a big fanatic of drinking or that sorts. But when he started hanging out with the same friends and the same people that got him into going to jail the first time, it just bring up old habits again. And not only did I use those old habits that he was doing, he brought it on to me and some of my other friends as well. And it's not mostly because of him. It's mostly because of me. Because I let my brother influence me and he started drinking. I wasn't a really heavy drinker because it's not something that I like. It's really nasty. I really don't like drinking. But peer pressure and being around people who do those kinds of things just made it worse and ease, not easy for me to get out that habit. But in November, when my birthday was coming around, my brothers had done some stuff to get themselves into trouble. And they had to go away to jail. Was when I realized, it's like, as soon as they left, I realized, oh, I don't need to drink. I don't need to smoke weed or do any of those things to have fun, to be a good person or to just in general feel good about myself. And as soon as they left from my, from my life, basically, I just realized like I needed to separate myself from those friends and those habits, which I did. And it made me realize like, you know, kids who smoke weed, drink and stuff, they do it to cope with things that are happening in their life. And that's what I was doing it for until I realized like I needed to work on myself and do things that make me happy and make me not want to use those things. Because it's hard to not stop doing those bad habits. And then in January, once January 2020 hit, I just completely stopped because I wasn't feeling good. And I eventually found out the reason why I wasn't feeling good about myself anymore. Because I was pregnant and I was feeling sick and nauseous all the time. And that's when I completely just stopped doing the drugs and alcohol. And even to right now, it's been basically a year later. I haven't been tempted to do drugs or touch alcohol, even though people around me do it because they're of age, you know? I don't feel the need that I, I don't feel the need to do those drugs or anything because personally, I look at my son and just think of him more than myself. And I would just say that people should take from this is kids who are struggling with drug abuse and addiction, they're just doing it because they find joy in that moment. And they're just trying to find a good space for that moment. But like I said, it only lasts for just a second. But you know, it's not good to, oh, sorry. What I'm trying to say is using drugs only numbs you for a second. You need to learn how to cope with things in your life by learning to just handle your situation. Yeah, basic, sorry. Basically what I'm trying to say is I used it because I was trying to find a place where to numb my pain or numb the things that I was going through. But that didn't work for me because after that, once I got sober, I felt every single thing that I was going through. Which made me realize was like, instead of trying to bury these feelings, I need to push through them. And instead of trying to distract myself with the drugs and alcohol, which is basically what I did. But now that I'm sober and not drinking or smoking or anything like that, I realized you just have to push through whatever it is that you're going through and know that there are people out there willing to help you and help you go through whatever it is that you're going through. And yeah, just surround yourself by your family and people who are good for you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jubilee. We, Doc, we have a question for either one of the youths. So can I go ahead and read it?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so here's a question either for Jubilee or Daylin. What information did your parents share with you that influenced your decision to not drink or do drugs?
My mom always told me not to do drugs and not to surround myself by it. She's always told me that since I've been little. Because she always told me, she was like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be the mom that bails her son out of the jail type thing. I'm not gonna be that mom. And she, and I just always listened to that. So, and I still don't surround myself by it, nor do it.
Good job. Thank you.
One thing that my mom used to tell me was, know how to stay true to yourself. You know, people around you can do whatever they want with their own selves. Because they are them, but they are not you. So what I mean is like, she used to tell me to just be in control of yourself because nobody else can be in control of you. And, and which is something that I really learned to use and take, use and put in use. As of right now, like I'm taking control of my own life and not letting other people influence me, which happens to a lot of kids in high school. You know, like they get peer pressure into doing things that they don't want to do. But once you learn how to have self-control and control yourself, you know, you can be around people who do those things without being tempted and wanting to do that stuff.
Ah, thank you. Thank you Jubilee and Daylin. I'd like to now introduce Dwight Randolph, who's going to say a few words about this topic of preventing and reducing underage drinking. So Dwight Randolph, you're on.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to at least thank you for allowing me to share this time with you. I am currently the Stop Act Grant Coordinator for the Community Council Institute. Listening to the presentations by the other participants, it has in a way changed my presentation. I had been working on this for a couple of days. And I'm at a point now where I think probably the best thing that I can do and say has to do with partly my own history. It's not something us as therapists do much or reveal much about ourselves. And that has to do with lies and saying and lots of other things. But I do have a brief, well, brief, I do have a history with substance abuse and I'd like to at least share some of it. First and foremost, my mother was paralyzed when I was 13 years of age. And from that day forward until I left, got out of high school, I had to spend a lot of time with physical therapy and things of that nature. And so I didn't, most of my work was in the home. I left, leave school, go home, work with her and then go to bed, go back to school the next day. That relationship from my point of view really left me with an awful lot of unanswered questions. And it wasn't long before I joined the military after that and spent four years there. And, and finally got out of that. Following the military, I went back to school, University of Oregon. I have several degrees from various schools. And I am a licensed mental health specialist. And what I've learned over the years is that one has to accept responsibility for one's own behavior. No matter what your background and your, and or your training is, substance use is specific to you and the way that you approach it and the kinds of things that you are using it to either avoid or you don't have answers to various and sundry kinds of things that you need to know about. And so I've dedicated the last 40 years since I've been cleaning sober to not only researching this field, but learning how to communicate with the individual that, with individuals that I'm working with. In other words, trying to make sure I'm on the same page and understand their issues, what the constellation of issues that they have gone through or that has sort of put them in a position to where they are substituting chemicals or, and are alcohol for ways of coping with their underlying issues. I'm very interested in the genetic aspects of alcohol and its way we end up using it, both from a psychosocial perspective and from a genetic perspective. That has been my life work to this point. And it has led me to a place where I am of the opinion that an awful lot of us, you know, are compensating and not, don't have the skills to understand, appreciate and or answer or deal with the kinds of questions that we have in our lives, our background, et cetera. And so we take what may seem like Yes? Gabriel? Excuse me, I thought someone was trying to speak. And, and take a position that eventually becomes an addiction. It starts as social and it ends up, you know, in a much different arena in terms of our personality, et cetera. So my life has been, last 40 years anyway, I've spent, you know, in trying to understand, not only understand this, but to do what I consider to be the number one issue in forming a relationship with someone. And that is making sure as best I can that we are on the same page, that we are talking about the same thing, that I understand the constellations of the individual that's led them to this point. And I recognize the various stages of development and use and those sorts of things. So it's been a very, very wonderful, for lack of a better way of saying it, profession for me because it not only resolved my childhood, early childhood issues with, with drinking, but it also has allowed me to understand and appreciate where each person is and what each person's road, individual road or collective road is to getting themselves to a position where they understand that substance use is simply just another way of diverting themselves from the information that they have to deal with or the issues that they have to deal with sooner or later. I'm really interested in the young lady before me who said that when she realized that she was no longer drinking, that those issues that she had to deal with were still there. And I think that is a very poignant point for all of us. You still have to understand and or appreciate and learn how to work through the kinds of things that you have encountered as, as an adolescent, you know, when your substance use began and began to move from one stage of development to another. So that's pretty much my issues at the moment and statements. I'm pleased to be here. I'm grateful to you for the opportunity to express some of this. And most of all, I am triggered by the comments that I've heard presently from the other presenters to talk a little bit about myself. And hopefully that's not too much. So thank you for the opportunity to, to address the issue. Sorry I didn't bother to stick to my original plan. I was convicted into thinking that, you know, the personal piece is in fact the most, probably the most meaningful thus far.
Thank you Dwight. I really appreciate all the panel members sharing their stories. And I wanted to open it up for questions and comments and discussion. Before doing that, though, I do want to say that we're having a raffle at the end of this evening. So don't go anywhere. Stick around. Risha is going to help with that raffle. It's about 6:42 now. We have a little bit more time in our hour here to entertain any comments or questions. I see a chat from Bernard that says, what can young people say when they are offered alcohol? Anyone have an answer? And then Paula has another question in the chat. But before, before getting to Paula's question, does anyone have an answer for what can young people say when they are offered alcohol? And anyone can jump in.
Simple and straight to the point. No, thank you. And go from there. Because it will not help you resolve whatever is going on with you. So the best way out of that is hopefully not to get started. Or if you have already started to realize that you're not really helping yourself when you are consuming. In fact, you're staying away from whatever the issues may be that you need to understand and appreciate.
Very good. Anyone else want to tackle this question about what can young people say?
I personally say, no thanks. I don't do that. And yeah, straight to the point. Just like Mr. Randolph said, I said Randolph said.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Daylin. Paula has a question about, is there a general process on a, an addicted, an addicted person goes through to realize, as Jubilee did, that their issues remain with and without alcohol or drugs? So the question is about the issues remaining there. They're not masked over by substance use, alcohol use. Is there a general process that addicted person goes through? To me, I guess it's such an individualized thing, but if anyone wants to tackle that a little bit more, they're welcome to it. Oh, I see Risha has responded. Like, lots of people don't think underage drinking is an issue if kids are allowed to drink with their family. Do you agree with that? Okay. Any, any commentary? Ideas about those two questions?
Well, hey, Dr. James, this is Gabriel here.
Gabriel, good to see you.
Doing all right. Good to see you, sir. Doing some babysitting. Well, not so much babysitting if they're my children, I guess. So you'll hear the kids in the background. So that's why I've muted in the camera on and off. And you kind of hear them acting up. You'll see the camera go off and it's all. But just to kind of get to her question, that kind of, just my opinion, that kind of just sounds like a personal awakening that, that she had. And I think every person at some point has to have, there's really not an exact day and time that you can put it on someone. But I just kind of think that sounds like a personal awakening, that everyone has a moment of coming to themselves and just realizing that what they're doing obviously isn't working. We hope and pray that it happens sooner rather than later. We hope and pray that it happens sooner rather than later, but that kind of just sounds like a personal awakening that, that, that someone has. And so that's kind of my answer to that, but.
Thank you. And I'd like to just offer a little commercial for Pastor Madison is the, is over at the St. John Baptist Church, and we've known each other for a number of years. And he is actually addressing a good deal of the spiritual issues that people are facing, because when you get down to it, it's a matter of your soul, who you are, your spirit, who you are, your being, who you are, and then the rest of it is kind of influences from the outside, in my view, friends. And as a matter of fact, most young people get their alcohol from their friends. And so that's, that points to the influence of, of friends. My wife and I have raised five children, and every one of them at about age 12 or 13 started talking more about friends than parents. So you have to kind of begin to deal with that and figure out that the friendship relationships are really important, and I'm glad the young people spoke to that a bit. If, now, so to Risha's question, people can actually drink at home in their environment. Let's say a parent decides to give a glass of wine, a bit of wine or a beer to their young teenager who may be 12, 14, 16, 18, whatever. That's not really illegal, because there's nobody peeking in the window to see what you're doing. But my comment, my response to that is that it's important for young people to know their family history. It's important to know that there might be some addiction in the family. It's important to realize that young people are in the developmental stage, all the way up into the twenties, where your brain, your body, your, you know, physical growth and development, psychological growth and development, social growth and development. I heard the governor talk today about trying to get the schools open. He has, he said he has no power to do that, but he's trying to move people in that direction where schools can open again in Washington State, because there's a lack of social learning, there's a lack of social interaction. And that's a powerful piece as young people grow and develop. So my point, though, is for parents and family members to realize that if addiction's in the family history, the person is at higher risk. If they are in, they're in the developmental stage, going through that as an adolescent, and so the brain is not fully developed, and there's going to be a main, there's going to be more of an impact on that person's brain, on their behavior, on their development. Other questions or comments as we have some good discussion going on here? Anything else from anyone who has not had a chance to say anything, introduce themselves? Don't be shy, don't be bashful. You can also put your comments in the chat if you wish. Oh, there's a question. Risha has a question in the chat. Another one. Do you think the media, TV and movies is playing any role in prevention of underage drinking? Oh, that's a good one. Wow. Okay, what about TV and the movies, folks?
Yeah, I'm sure someone here is, you know, there are people here see some gray and some white hair, which is beautiful, so I know they're simple, not older than me, but I kind of even feel old myself. I kind of feel old myself in this sense where I really don't see, maybe I'm missing it, but I have small children, so I watch the Cartoon Channel, like Disney Jr., Disney Plus, and I really don't see a lot of don't do drugs commercials anymore, don't drink, or you know, the famous one we all grew up on, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs, any questions? And then show the scrambled egg. I just really don't see that anymore. And maybe it's just me, but if someone can kind of speak to that, I really don't feel like they play any role in the prevention.
Although, I will, I will counter that with the, the anti-smoking campaign has been prevalent through, you know, that would, that would be my only offer up on that. But, but I agree, I mean, I don't, I think we grew up at a time where the drugs are, you know, was a, you know, moving forward with pro messages about not doing, you know, drugs and, and alcohol to the point where, you know, they had some really good messages back then. And, and I, I was going to get to something too, Risha, that, that, that earlier question, or I guess maybe it's kind of related to it, it's not, it doesn't tie in directly, but it seems like high schoolers have this, and some college kids do, or a lot of college kids have this, you know, nothing, nothing can affect me, I'm invincible, you know? And they get in that mindset that, you know, this is, this is the time in my life where I get to experience things and, and take it to excess, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna lead to anything bad. And at least from my perspective, and probably Officer Darlington can share, and, and all of us have had experiences where, you know, we know friends that have overindulged in stuff at, at an early age and end up driving a car and end up crashing the car and end up with a DUI and end up hopefully not killing somebody, but there's been those experiences or injuring themselves and their passengers at prom or something like that. And it, and those types of stories need to come out more, not to, not to villainize that person, but the decision. Because, you know, it only takes one night in your life to screw it up for a long time. And if we could get the message out, you know, to folks to say, look, you have your entire life to experience a lot of things, you can make choices to experience them in a safe way, but there are, there are balances that you have to go through to determine what is right for you and what you can handle and those types of things. And, and high school's probably not the right time to do that. And I would argue college is probably even a little bit, it gets taken to an extreme too many times. So anyway, I, I don't want to preach, but I just wanted to share, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. Other comments or other questions out there?
I, I think that there is a significant issue here with this kind of issue. You, there, some of us, some people have a predisposition for certain substances. The minute they start them, they know almost immediately that, hey, this is something that makes me feel better, makes me feel different, makes me different, you know? And they're not looking at the addictive aspect of it, they're just thinking in the present in terms of how it makes them feel. And they proceed with that until it becomes, the body begins to change and to demand, or at least, or place the substance in a position where he or she feels like they're in a better position with it, you know? And they do better with it. And so eventually it just, it certainly becomes an addictive process over time. But some of us are almost predisposed toward it genetically, we're, you know, because of the impact of alcohol and or substances on our parents and communities.
Dwight, I appreciate your, your comments, your remarks. Someone said, oh, this is Wanda, question, there is a science that says fear tactics do not work with youth anymore. Positive community norming is the way most prevention focuses on. I think that's true in the sense that if you look at the Healthy Youth Survey, the last one was in 2018, it showed that 19% of 10th graders were, had used alcohol in the last 30 days. That's what's focused on, but if you flip that around, you can say that approximately 80% of 10th graders did not use any alcohol in the past 30 days. So majority of young people are not drinking, which is the positive community norm factor. It's that 20% that are, 19, 20% of 10th graders that are in the past 30 days using, and that's where the focus becomes, because those individuals may end up getting into some difficulty legally, with family, with school, and so on. So it's really kind of an interesting view, because the majority are not using, but the smaller number that are using will get a lot of attention because they actually are vulnerable to different kinds of, you know, the impact of different kinds of dangers. Paula has a question, do we need a new John Kitna commercial? I'm not, I'm not familiar with that commercial, so Paula, maybe you can explain that a little Oh, I guess Paula's. Paula, are you able to explain the John Kitna commercial?
I'm sorry, I am able to explain it. A long time ago, John Kitna did a commercial with a baby in his arms, and it really was a personal testimony about what, what one night and making the wrong choice did to affect his life.
Tell us, tell us who John Kitna is.
John Kitna was a football player for Lincoln High School, I believe he was for Lincoln High School, and then he went on to play as a quarterback for the Seahawks.
Very good. I do remember that now.
He also went to Central Washington University and had to walk on and bring his own football with him before they would even give him a look. But that's, you know, he did father a child, and some of that had to do a little bit with alcohol and making choices at a very early age, and he met, he met that obligation, but I, you know, we had lots of posters at that time with him making that advertisement to influence those coming after him to make better choices. And I thought they were very effective at the time.
Good. Thank you.
That was when he was coaching at Lincoln then, right? When he came back?
Actually, that was when he was being the quarterback for the Seahawks. He, when he came back, he, they still maintained that, those posters for a long time, but it really was that period of when he was coaching, I mean, when he was, was being the quarterback for the Seahawks and before he went to coach at, at Lincoln.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
There's one final question in the chat, then I'll turn it over to Risha or Wanda, whoever wants to wrap it up. But the question from Paula is the predisposition to addiction is real? Are students being told about that and how to identify? That's a really important question, and I, I'm not sure how much is being told to, to students about the predisposition to addiction. Lieutenant Darlington, you're spending some time in schools. Do you see much being said about young people being told about addiction?
Yeah, I've spent a fair amount of time in schools, mainly with the, the younger kids. I'm not there obviously 100% of the time, but I, I think the message could be reinforced, certainly, and then I had a couple of comments. So the fear tactic, I agree, is not, perhaps not working the way it should, and I think the, the more important message is to set kids up for success as opposed to failure, to emphasize the importance of education, doing well in school, working towards a degree or a profession. I think those are the messages, messages that need to go out to students as opposed to the, the fear tactic. And actually, I like what Pastor Madison had to say, so he was right on, he's right on target when he's talking about the soul of one's child and a person's well-being. So that's the way to zero in on that message, to build, the idea is to build children up, to increase their, them having a positive image about themselves, and then the other cards will fall in place so that they would be less apt to fall into a, a negative or a lifestyle that is harmful to them. That's, that's what I would like to see.
Very good. Risha, I'm gonna put this back to you to kind of lead us towards some closure here.
Okay, thank you, Doc. And thank you all the panelists for sharing their story today and their knowledge. Really appreciate it. There are a lot of inspiring things said today, and I wanted to just thank you guys and everyone else who came together to answer these questions. Thank you all for sharing your knowledge here, and thank you our coalition members and partner Safe Street for coming along and getting this town hall done today, like having all, like working together on this. Thank you so much, all of you guys. And thank you all participants who came in. I'm gonna do a raffle, like just a random number generator, and whoever gets picked up will get a $50 gift card. Let's, let me do this real quick. Okay, so I got Connor. Yay, congrats.
Just joking, I was just joking to myself, how do I, do I count since I'm on Safe Streets?
Everyone counts, so.
Yeah, it counts.
Yep.
Oh, the census is over, never mind.
I'll get the information later from, from Wanda or anyone else. So other than that, I think, um, we are done here today. Thank you all for coming in, and if there are any questions, we, feel free to email Wanda, Wanda made, Wanda, Wanda's email, everyone has it, I think. So I guess you can pass it, pass it to me if you ever get any emails with questions or anything, and, or I can leave my email address here if anybody wants to get in contact with us. And other than that, we are recording the town hall, so we'll make sure to send it around for.
Little disclosure, I, while introducing themselves, I had not started the recording, so when Jubilee was first talking, and it dawned on me as she kept going, I was like, oh my gosh, I forgot to hit record. So I say, record then, so I just wanted a little disclaimer about that.
It's, it's, I think it's, it's fine, it's just, I think, we all, we all know about each other now, so it's, yeah, I think that's it for today. Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Nice to see you, Dr. James.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Risha, thank you.